Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for Wednesday, February 8th, 2023. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Right.
Here.
Line up.
Here.
Carolyn.
Here.
Herzon.
Here.
Carnes.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Selachi.
Here.
Thank you very much. At this time, it's an honor to introduce two students who are going to lead us in the pledge from Lakeside Elementary School. They are Malachi Parks and Weston Lloyd. So I'll invite you boys to come forward and lead us in the pledge, please.
(inaudible)
Weston and Malachi are fifth graders at Lakeside Elementary. Again, I had a chance to visit with them a little bit. Next year, they're going on to South Park. So we were happy to have them join us today representing their elementary school. And so for Weston, we have a certificate for you. So congratulations. And Malachi, certificate for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We are a learning institution and we serve children first. And so it's always important to us to make sure that we have students at our meetings to remind us why we're here and that we make decisions in the best interest of our students, at the same time being good stewards of the financial resources of the district. It's become our practice to not only have students come and lead us in the pledge, but also for the principal of that elementary school, represented by the Knights students, to give us some background on some of the great things that are going on at that elementary school. So I'm happy to announce today that we have with us Mrs. Amy Ashton, who's going to tell us about some of the many positive things going on at Lakeside Elementary.
Hello. Good to see all of you. Like Barb said, I'm Amy Ashton, principal at Lakeside Elementary. This is my 12th year serving as the principal at Lakeside, and I have many, many wonderful things to share with you tonight. I'm extremely proud of the students that we serve at Lakeside, the staff that works collaboratively at Lakeside, and the families and community that we've built. Here's a few highlights I'd like to share with you. One of them is about safe, positive, caring, learning environment. In the beginning of the year, our school surveyed students to ask a little bit about trusted adults and school safety, how they feel around school and if they feel safe. And in the beginning of the school year, we had 82% of our students that indicated they had a trusted adult at school. When we surveyed again mid-year, we found that 98% of our students felt that they had a trusted adult. We were thrilled with that data and still thinking about how we really serve that extra 2% that aren't, that didn't feel like they had that trusted person yet. And so we've set up students paired with adults that they chose to meet weekly and establish those continued connections. We also asked students if they felt safe at school. And in the beginning of the school year, 98% of our students said yes, we feel safe at school. Mid-year, when we surveyed again, we had 100% of our students saying they feel safe at school. So that is not only an exciting data point for us to celebrate at school, but it really is an amazing way for us to think about our educators and what they're doing in classrooms every day to set students up for success and make sure it feels like a school family in our building. I'd next like to share a little bit about literacy. We're seeing excellent growth from students in literacy at Lakeside. Across grades three through five, we have already made 88% progress toward our eye-ready typical growth. And we already have 45% of our students who are meeting grade level expectations at mid-year. We're looking forward to continuing to see that growth, and we are seeing individual students who are really giving us excellent motion forward and really thinking about, how is this possible? We have students that have exceeded 200, 300, 350% growth. And so when we look individually at students, we are also capitalizing on those successes and really considering what else we do to help push students that are not yet at those percentages. That work that we're seeing with 200, 300, 350% growth is in just a half of a year. So we're excited about the professional development that we've had so far this year. Some of our work, along with research in science of reading, looking specifically at phonics and data-driven teacher practice, has really helped us move forward this year. So we're very thankful for the literacy work that we've done so far. In our kindergarten through second grade classrooms, we're seeing significant progress in spelling. We're seeing that due to some of the high-leverage practices that we've been learning. Segmenting, blending, orthographic mapping are practices that I'm seeing as I'm in classrooms on a regular basis. Our kindergarten through second grade teachers are using those practices daily with small groups and whole group, and we are seeing our students make huge gains. I also want to share with you that our students and school family celebrated World Read Loud Day recently. We welcomed guest readers into our building from the Oshkosh Fire Department, from Winnebago County Sheriff's Department, the Oshkosh Public Library, the Community for Hope Foundation, and our district leadership here at our central office, school board members, and even one of our custodial staff did some excellent reading with our students. We were very excited to have guest readers, but not only that, we had challenges for the students to keep them thinking about their love of reading and how we continue to promote that joy throughout our school. At the end of the day, Brewing Futures came over and celebrated with all of us, and hot chocolate was provided for all students. I think the boys behind me would say, ultimate success. At Lakeside, we continue to connect with students to build strong relationships. We persist in learning, and we continue to grow. I am so very proud of the work that we're doing at Lakeside, and I thank you for allowing me to come and share that with you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to comment? Are we allowed to comment? Oh, yes. Sure.
I just wanted to congratulate Mrs. Ashton on the success that she's had at Lakeside. And I'm going to date myself, but all three of my kids went through Lakeside. And it was a, prior to Amy joining Lakeside, they had had a lot of turnover in principals. And my son would say, mommy, who's going to be our principal next year? Because they didn't have continuity at all. And Mrs. Ashton came and took over that school, and it has been thriving since. And I think that that is a huge credit to your leadership and what you do for the students there. You know, we always say that good schools come top-down with good leadership. So I just wanted to thank you and seeing firsthand the amazing work that you've done and continue to do, especially during the years when Lakeside was two schools instead of one school and then the expansion. So it was really nice to hear your update tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Ashton, and thank you, Weston and Malachi, for joining us. All of you are welcome to stay for as much of the meeting as your schedule allows, and we certainly understand if you have other things on your calendars to do tonight. So thank you for being here. Next, we have the land acknowledgement with Dr. Davis.
Yes, just a nod to our land acknowledgement. So as we gather today, we'd like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived on the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Next, we look at approval of the agenda. Is there any interest in moving anything around on the agenda tonight? We can't add anything under Wisconsin Open Meeting Law, but we can change the order if someone so desires.
Nope.
All right, then we'll accept the agenda by acclamation. Moving on then, we have the board president's report. Just one item tonight, and that is retirements. This is a special night in many ways, not only with having the students here, but it's rare that we have two retirements from the central office staff, let alone on the same, to be announced on the same evening. So if you've read the Oshkosh Herald for this week, you've probably seen that the district is going to be losing two longtime contributors to the central office staff. Dr. Dave Gunlock is our deputy superintendent and is planning to retire at the end of the current school year. He's spent 34 years in public education and 13 of those here in Oshkosh. He oversees and supports key functions in the district, including strategic planning, facilities planning, enrollment, and staffing. Also assists with community outreach, engaging with organizations and individuals to build strong relationships and foster a shared understanding of the district's needs and opportunities. He also oversees the district's technology team and is responsible for guiding our technology efforts into the 21st century. During his tenure, he's been instrumental in making sure that Oshkosh is a future-ready school. He was the designer of the Learning Without Limits program, of course, with others supporting him. That's resulted in all K-12 students having their very own district-issued laptops, along with professional development to bring the teachers along so they keep ahead of the students in terms of using those technologies. He's provided critical leadership in partnering with the community and developing our long-range facilities plan, engaging our community, and fostering supportive multiple referendums, often serving as the face of the district. And that's allowed the district to continue to provide exceptional programming, advancing our community-developed strategic plans and implement the first phase of our four-phase long-range facilities plan. So, Dr. Gunlock, we thank you for your service and wish you well as you start a new phase and stage of life. So thank you. Dr. Andy Jones is our executive director of administration. He is retiring after 37 years in public education, with 12 of those being spent in the Oshkosh district, first as the principal of Oshkosh North, and then moving into his executive director role, where he has been responsible for leadership development, support, and evaluation of school principals. He serves as a customer service rep and resource to our families and oversees the complaint and resolution process for our families. He also serves as a member of the district's emergency preparedness collaborative operations team, also known as EPCOT, and provides leadership during crisis and emergency situations. He has provided service to leaders throughout the organization during his tenure, supports district goals and policy that has impacted students, staff members, and families in countless positive ways. And through his commitment to school safety and continuous improvement, our EPCOT team has grown and continues to serve as an invaluable resource for the district and the community and is also, has been beneficial in helping other districts with their emergency plans. So we thank Dr. Jones and wish him well in his new chapter in life. We also have a couple of other retirees to announce. Doris Bailey has been a mathematics teacher and a summer school elementary and middle school principal since 2007, and she will be retiring before summer school starts this coming year. So that will be June 5th as her retirement date. And Melissa Arissa Ryan has been a literacy teacher at, most recently at Carl Treger Middle. She's been with the district for 30 years, joining us in 1993, and we wish all four of tonight's retirees all the best as they continue to pursue other interests, always remembering you're always welcome back as a substitute. I know that was a shameless attempt at recruiting, but we do need substitutes.
We need subs.
Okay, any other comments or questions on our retirees? All right, then with that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Davis?
Yes, so Owen was not able to be with us tonight, so Tessa is solo, so she's going to hold up the student end. So she's on twice tonight, one with the, her school's update that we have for a monthly update, and then a little bit later in looking at college and career readiness. So Tessa, what's up with the Wildcats these days?
So it's only been a couple weeks since I last presented, so I don't have a lot, but here's what the Wildcats have been up to the past couple weeks. So Snow Blast Week started at the beginning of this week. Students got into teams of 10 and have competed in a variety of events, including log saw, log toss, shooting free throws, and then measuring their team's waistline and height. And just today, we built human pyramids, as well as competed in tug-of-war. So it's been a lot of fun. SpongeBob the Musical had their performances a few weeks ago, and I got to go to that, and it was just amazing. Everyone did a really great job. The dance team qualified for state for their D1 Palm routine and just competed last weekend, and they did well. Our bowling teams are the conference champions. Just last night, they had their final meet, and all three teams, I believe, are, went completely undefeated. And then the boys swim team also took second in their conference meet. The wrestling team had seven students place at conference, and they took sixth overall. And the gymnastics team will be hosting their conference next week Friday. Both our forensics and mock trial teams had competitions. Forensics took third at their slinger invite, and mock trial just attended regionals last weekend. And then we had our Adaptive Sports League floor hockey game against Oshkosh North, and we had lots of fans show up to cheer them on. And finally, as always, you can check out oshkoshwestwildcats.com for sports news and the index for articles written by students.
All right. Thank you, Councillor. Appreciate that. All right, so over to the superintendent's good news report for tonight. First of all, we had some of our middle school students in E-Academy recently completed a narrative writing piece. As part of their learning, they came together to share their writing with others and enjoy "Read a Latte Celebration." Coffee shop, "Read a Latte." Make sure everybody's tracking that. We love hearing what students like about our E-Academy program. On the screen, you'll see a few of their comments, with students talking about the unique connections they are able to meet and make and the valuable experiences that E-Academy offers. So thanks for everyone for contributing to that opportunity. Oshkosh West students in the Academy for Global Studies have been busy. A few highlights include: Level 1 students completed a group project about Africa, which included using information they learned in their world cultures class after reading "Homegoing" in their English class to incorporate their language, their language learning. The presentations were done in Spanish. And Level 2 students created unique projects for the UW-Madison Great World Text Project, and a few of those students will be chosen to go to UW-Madison for a full-day conference where they will present their project and engage with other students from around the Fifth graders at Carl Treger Elementary recently started a school newspaper. The school, the newspaper will be published monthly. It provides an opportunity for students to showcase their photography skills, brainstorm article ideas, and submit poems, comics, and fun challenges and trivia for students and staff. Students at Jefferson Elementary wanted to celebrate the amazing partnership between Jefferson and First English Lutheran Church. Jefferson's students and staff are so thankful for everything that the church does for the school community, from donating food bags for families every week to donating winter gear when needed. The students gathered together to show their appreciation, including presenting a unique homemade thank-you poster. Four Oshkosh West senior football players recently signed letters of intent to play college football next fall, were proud of the commitment of these student athletes and wished them well in their college careers. Oshkosh North recently, Oshkosh North recently announced the winners of its school attendance program sponsored by TDS. The students had, have had four or less absences and at least a 2.5 GPA for the last two months. The lucky students received a certificate and a gift card. Oshkosh North is proud of their effort in representing Spartan pride. Congratulations, everyone, and keep up the great work. Students from Oshkosh North High School and Oshkosh West High School recently attended a student leadership conference led by Ted Nitsky, CEO of CISA VI. The conference was filled with learning, skill-building, and growth. Students were encouraged to channel their inner buffalo, running into storms that life throws their way. We're excited to see what the future holds for these incredible young people. And finally, just a reminder of the district's COVID-19 plan that is on our OASD website. And then a brief look at the calendar for the last couple of weeks. It certainly has been a very busy beginning to the calendar year. So thank you for everyone for having me out and about amongst the community. Thanks, and that concludes the superintendent's report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Moving on, we have several district administrative reports, starting first with the referendum update with Mr. Fox and Nate from Bray. Looks like you're carrying the heavy, you're doing the heavy lifting tonight.
Yes, Mr. Fox was unavailable to be here tonight, and I'm happy to present the report for the board this evening. So thank you for having me. So work completed over the last 30 days. Continued installation of building mechanical systems in the academic tower, known as sections A and B. The academic tower, third floor structural CMU and structural steel is complete, and then the roof as well. The non-load-bearing walls within the academic tower is still ongoing. Exterior spray foam that keeps the building warm is ongoing. Building A roofing steel is complete, as mentioned, and then building section C, the penthouse, is complete. The learning stair is structurally complete, you'll see that in the photos here in a little bit, and the cafeteria stage construction is in progress. Some photos of some of the work going on, starting perhaps in the upper left. You can see drywalls being added to the cafeteria commons. This is a view right away when you come up the stairs. Going down, directly down to the bottom left, you can see the foam being placed at the stage in the cafeteria commons. Then up into the middle center is, then shifting the camera ever so slightly, you can see the stage below. If you look closely, you can see the learning stairs off to the left, and that really is a great view of all the net, or the windows that art will be able to display down into the commons room. So the second floor art rooms are those windows kind of in that purplish color right now. And this is an interesting time to take a photo because all the clear story windows currently have plywood over them, and actually, right as we speak, glass is being installed. So this is the darkest that this will ever be going forward, and in future photos, the light will be shining through all of those wood-covered glass, and the light will be filtering in. Bottom right, or sorry, bottom center photo, excuse me, is some of the locker room work occurring. These are small walls being placed so that concrete slabs can be placed on top of them to make benches, and then eventually lockers will be placed on those. And then the far right detail is the learning stairs. So you can see the far third of that is the true stair portion of the learning stair, and then the closer two-thirds in this photo are the larger steps where students would have the option to sit and eat, do homework, gather before, after, or during school. On the exterior, many windows are being, going in, so starting on the left, you can start to see, this is actually a shot of the main entry. Those slots are actually where lights will be placed in the future. And then you can start to see the large piece of glass that is the media center right next to the, to the main entry. Top center photo is the third floor, where you can see the structural steel being placed on the top floor of the academic tower. Bottom center photo is the, what will be the entrance to what we had called the events portion of the building. So you can see an elevator tower going in, that would be the weight room and the fitness studio, and then the gym just in the background. And the photo on the far right is actually standing next to the scaffolding in the middle photo, looking down. So this would be the events lobby. This is where before and after games, you know, be a large gathering space, before and after school. And what they're building in that photo is actually the wall that would take you into the music portion of the building. Work projected over the next 30 days, I'm sure you guys are sick of this, but the continued installation of the building mechanical systems, HVAC, plumbing, and electrical in pretty much the entire building, but specifically in A, B, and the field house. The clear story exterior panels, so the metal cladding on the clear story will be completed. Drywall finishes will continue, especially in section D. Roofing completely over the academic tower will be completed. They're complete with half of it right now. They'll finish the other half by the next time we talk. The mechanical penthouse for the academic tower will be completed. The field house and cafeteria ceiling and wall paint will be completed. So right now, that's a pretty raw box, and finishes will start to go in there and as they start to button up the gymnasium space. Exterior foam in the academic tower will be completed, and then the building will finally receive its last parts to switch over from temporary power to permanent power. So a good milestone for that project. Any questions?
Awesome.
No? Thank you.
Thank you. Carnes, did you have a question? Well done, Mr. Councillor. Thank you for your continued updates. Very exciting. Next, we have budget variance on the ESER funds, and then ESER funds update with Mr. Nihans.
Good evening. The budget variance report is tracking very similar to it had as to the last two months. Some highlights from the report are, right now, we are projecting for our Fund 10 and Fund 27, the operating budgets. We are projecting a $2.4 million surplus to budget in that fund, in those two funds. So when you, when you combine that with the $1.7 million we transferred into Fund 46 already, we're really looking at about a $4.1 million surplus to budget for the operating funds. This is through the month of December. The food service is continuing to run well. They're projecting out at about a $400,000 surplus, and the rec department is projecting about $100,000 surplus at this time. The ESER portion of the report, we did get all of our budgets approved by DPI recently, so we are starting to file claims into, we finished all of ESER II, and we have started putting claims in for ESER III. More of that detail will be coming out next month in that monthly report. Are there any questions on any of the budget variance or ESER reports? No?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the update on the Abance Program/True Academy with Mrs. Jones, Piran, and Ms. Fisher, and, and Dr. Jones.
Good evening. I'm kind of pinch-hitting for Matt. He's at a national conference and is out of state. Again, the True Academy was something new this year, a brand-new program. It's an expulsion abance program. We started with a total of 27 students that were enrolled at the True Academy at the first semester of the 22-23 school year. Of those 27, eight of them had transitioned from our Crossroads program from last year. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to one of the directors here, Mrs. Fisher. So, Ms. Fisher.
Hi. So just some highlights of the program. We were able to transition four students back to their home schools. Myself and some other staff have checked in with them, and they're all doing well. So that's one of the things that we love, is that we can still check on them and see how things are going, and they still have us as kind of their bridge to go back, not to come back to us, but to keep in touch with. Some of the struggles we've had is staffing. We don't, still currently don't have a counselor or a math teacher. Staffing's kind of an issue throughout the whole district. One of the positives is that we've been able to use some retirees in these positions part-time, so at least we have some help in those roles, but that is one of the issues that we're seeing.
So, that's one of the things that we love, is that we can still check on them and see how things are going, and they still have us as kind of their bridge to go back, not to come back to us, but to keep in touch with. Some of the struggles we've had is staffing. We don't, still currently don't have a counselor or a math teacher. Staffing's kind of an issue throughout the whole district. One of the positives is that we've been able to use some retirees in these positions part-time, so at least we have some help in those roles. But that is one of the issues that we're seeing. Students have earned, on average, three credits last semester, and that's huge. Coming from the Crossroads program, where we're seeing very, very minimal credits earned, some zero, some up to one credit, then they return to their schools, and they're behind on credits. So, then they almost have to do an ulterior path anyway. So, having them go back to their schools, being on track with graduation, has been huge for them to feel that success. And then we provide transportation. That's something new from Crossroads. They didn't have that, so we picked them up, we dropped them off, and that has helped drastically with attendance as well.
I wanted to acknowledge Winnebago County is kind enough to give us that space on Waco Avenue as a free lease, so just really acknowledge their partnership. Andrea Fisher is doing a really nice job working with the social workers for some of the students we have over there, so we just really appreciate the collaboration we have with Winnebago County in this program and their support of us.
So, all in all, through one semester, it's been very successful. We're looking forward to the second semester continuing on as we continue to grow, learn, and adapt with this new program. It's been very successful.
So, and I just want to, you know, maybe wrap it up and one, just thank Andrea for her leadership. You know, this was one of her brain children, not child, children, because she's always coming up with ideas. But really committed to making sure that kids get the opportunities that they need to be able to succeed, and sometimes that is after some mistakes are made in providing that grace and forgiving kids a second chance. And this is a true opportunity. You know, when we talk about equity for kids and being able to have them be able to maximize their opportunity, these are kids in our previous structure that would have been saddled with an expulsion, right? And so, what we've been able to do through this program is give them another opportunity prior to that step. And as you had heard tonight, you know, we've already had four of those students who have been able to recover, stay on track with credits, and be successful back in their schools. Like, that is a very important detail that Andrea and her staff have been able to pull off. So, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the students and the families in our district because that is how we make a difference. We certainly always have opportunities for improvement, as you had mentioned, staffing, as we're moving forward, but this has made an immediate impact on our district. So, I just want to say thanks and just acknowledge that connection between, you know, what our goals are and what this program helps us achieve. So, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead. You go first.
So, obviously, it's a new thing that we're going down, we're halfway through the first year, I guess. Where did you expect to see us at this point? You know, are you, I guess, Dr. Davis as well, you can be included, but I'm looking over here. Any of you, like, you know, did you have a goal of where we wanted to be with this and where we are now, I guess?
I didn't expect us to be close to capacity, but I did. So, some of the kids that came over from Crossroads, they have a timeline where, when they can enter back into their home schools. Right now, we've only been able to transition four, but four successful ones. At the end of this year, we'll have a lot more that can transition back, so that's really awesome, that we'll have more that way.
And I, just from my perspective, I think, again, there's always just growth and learning as you're moving through this. To be able to be really clear about the connection between the students' home school and True Academy, because True Academy is just an opportunity for services to be provided so they can come back. So, Wildcats are still Wildcats, whether they're at True Academy or whether they're at Oshkosh West. And so, to be able to have, you know, that clear connection between the school, even when students need a little bit of a break and some extra services, has been really important. So, that's been something I think that, you know, Andrea's been delivered about from the very beginning and that we just continue to work through, and that helps with that transition. And the goal is not to fill up True Academy and expand its doors and be a model. The idea is for it to never exist, right? But we know that, you know, we have students that are, at this point, in opportunities where they need some extra services, so the more that we can, you know, get students in, get them the services, and get them back on track. So, I think in that capacity, it's been successful. We certainly would always like to see it be a little bit more.
We also have the administration of, and people services from the schools, Northwest, Merrill, Webster, they come visit, and that has been huge for kids to not feel like they've just been passed off to something else. They come in, they sit down and work with them. Sometimes they'll go, you know, do art with them, or they'll sit in class, or through the portfolios, I think we talked about at the beginning of the year, some of our kids completed their portfolios, so they were able to present them, kind of, or share them with the administration and people services of, here's my successes, here's what I've done well, here's what I still struggle with, and when I come back, this is what I'm going to need, kind of their triggers and stuff. So, that's been pretty impactful for them, too.
And you have another staff over here?
Yes, I do have my social worker, Hannah Dumke, here, who has been amazing for our kids and program as well.
Let me say before, Liz, you guys, to all of you who've done this and working with this, thank you. It's incredibly important and definitely makes me happy seeing the first few months of this where we've gone, so it's all to say, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. Providing, you know, optional or alternate services to students who are in need of extra support has always been a passion of mine in education, so I am really appreciative for this brain child of yours. I'm brain children, right? And I think it's great that we are transitioning so many students back to their home school and that they're earning their credits. To hear you talk about the difference, that it sounds like it's gone up an average of, like, two credits per student, I think that that really shows that this is a successful program and that students aren't seeing this, you know, as a, like you said, it was an expulsion, as like a consequence or punishment, but as an opportunity to go back and succeed when they land on their feet at their new school, or at their home school. So, thank you.
It feels more like a bridge now rather than a total separation, which has been really cool to see. I mean, it's definitely my passion, I know it's Hannah's passion, and it's really growing into something incredible that we love.
Awesome.
I'm very happy to have an update on this.
Yeah.
During my tenure on the board, and I suspect it's true of others, too, the concept of holding students accountable at the same time holding out a bridge or a piece of hope that they can come back and be successful, because sometimes I think when students believe they've dug such a deep hole, there is no hope. And this provides hope, and it provides a connection with the schools, which we were told when this concept came to the board for approval would be happening, so that these kids are not cut off from their home schools, but they are accountable, but it also provides an opportunity for staff to provide more intensive support to ensure success when they go back to their home schools. So, I'm very pleased to hear about the successes you've experienced. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, we have 4K transition to Shapiro School with Dr. Gunlock and Mrs. Shendel.
And we also have Principal Bezak from Shapiro Elementary.
Very good. Wonderful.
So, as you all know, at the end of this year, the Webster site is going to be changed into the new Menominee Elementary School. There are currently three rooms that are used for 4K services at that site that are not going to be at the new elementary school, so we were faced with some thoughts. We know in Phase II that the Shapiro site will eventually become a 4K center, so rather than move those twice, you know, move them to the old Merrill site for a year where the other Webster Elementary students are going to go, and then move them to Shapiro, it was just deemed probably wiser to make them move in the transition to Shapiro right away. So, that was the voluntold kind of thing that occurred. And then, you know, then Beth Shendel and Lindsay Bezak really assisted us in figuring out some of the details and logistics, and special thanks to them, and also to Jim Fox for putting together a plan to make this happen relatively short order. So, I'll turn it over to Beth and Lindsay.
We're thrilled to be at Shapiro. I'm not sure if you know, but Lindsay has a background at the early childhood level, a lot of experience in kindergarten, and so just being in a building with a principal who understands that level has been very calming for our staff. So, her shift to Shapiro was appreciated. We are moving two four-year-old kindergarten classrooms, so a total of four sections of four-year-old kindergarten, as well as early childhood special education that currently exists over at Webster, and over to Shapiro. The beautiful thing that will happen is that we are really starting to create a hugged location where our staff can better share resources, we can better share staff where the needs exist, collaboration, and just innovation. We'll have a little bit more opportunity to flourish when you're one of the only in a building, as you know, as we looked at consolidating buildings and trying to take a look at that piece. That's something that our level has been dreaming of for as long as I've been here, so about 15, 16 years, to just have more opportunities to collaborate, so we're excited about that. With that, a lot of our special education programming will primarily be provided out of Shapiro, so again, just really coming into a space where we can leverage staffing, we can leverage resources, and really think outside the box, similar to what they're doing at that high school level, trying to match up as best we can what supports might be needed down at the early childhood, three, four, and five-year-old level. And so, the collaborative effort, I would say, would be trying to make sure that we're able to be respectful to Shapiro and their ability to continue providing the high-quality educational opportunities for kindergarten through fifth grade while also welcoming in quite a few more little bodies into their building. As you know, Shapiro's a large space with not a lot of walls, and so, just working with Lindsay to kind of collaborate around the spaces. I can let you kind of talk about the impact on Shapiro and what still will exist, and just be shippable a little. Yeah, so our programming that we currently have at Shapiro is all staying in place. We have a couple of location changes that will be happening so that we can accommodate the additional four-year-old kindergarten sections, and we have one lonely wall that will be going up in our STEM room. So, right now, our STEM room is a very large space. We will continue to have plenty of room in there for the needs of our Shapiro family, putting up a wall to create a space for our occupational therapy and physical therapy to move over into that space, which then opens up a space for Beth's program to come in. My first year at Shapiro, so I'm still settling in, but I loved the fact, one of the big drawing points for me was that there was 4K in early childhood in the building. Really looking forward to building our school family pre-K through 5, as we're all there together, and really tapping into the brilliance of Beth's staff, which I've already been able to do this year, and looking at what are some things that they're doing in 4K that we can bridge over to our kindergarten and first-grade sections as well. So, it's been a great collaboration.
Questions at all about the move, how that impacts programming, anything of that nature?
Yes.
I have a question. So, we're moving the sections that are at Webster, but how will that impact, say, the families that live near Webster or near Shapiro or throughout the city? I know the 4K planning of where students go is a lot more complicated than kindergarten through 12th grade, so.
You hit it exactly, so thank you for asking that question. Every year, it's a little intricate to figure out what our zones are for four-year-old kindergarten. One of the nuances of running a half-day four-year-old kindergarten program is that we recognize that while in elementary school, we run off of the date, off of the home addresses. At the four-year-old kindergarten level, we run off of their daytime addresses. So, where you might be at home may not actually be where you are midday for transportation purposes for four-year-old kindergarten. And so, every year, this will work very similarly to how we do it each year. Kids register, we collect that daytime address. All of those addresses get mapped out, and then we design our zones accordingly. So, what you will likely see around that Webster area will be, as we start shifting students, all of Oshkosh, our locations where children will attend will likely shift a little south and a little, what direction, west, southwest? Southwest, thank you. I can't go any further east. A little southwest. So, you know, the families that are currently attending at Webster may not be the families then that would move over to Shapiro. So, we try to make sense of where those transportation routes go. They may attend a site that's near Webster's addresses, so we have several community locations there as well. So, everything will kind of shift. Also, recognizing, too, that we're going to work hard. If you are, your daytime address is in the Webster area, you would still expect to see students that you'll go to kindergarten with and be on a bus with those kiddos heading on over into four-year-old kindergarten. So, daytime address really ruling the conversation about where those students will go, but not just picking up the current Webster students and plunking them at Shapiro. That would be probably not advisable as far as the transportation routes go. Does that answer that question?
Yes. Perfect. Thank you. You bet.
Other questions?
I guess when we talk about this at facilities, one of the things that excited me is the consolidation of resources and how that can be used to help push our literacy work forward within the district, which is so vital and important at the young age, you know? I'm really excited to see how that can be another piece to help us, you know, enable more kids to achieve their full potential. So, I'm just excited about that collaboration that will be able to take place in that space because of the combining of resources, so.
Yeah, I think from a staffing end of things and also tapping into, right, that cross between four-year-old kindergarten, kindergarten, and kind of starting to do some collaboration, that way it will be really wonderful as well, so thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Good to hear from you. Next, we have achievement gap reduction, or AGR, with Dr. Rowan.
Hello. Hi. All right, so yes, AGR, achievement reduction, is part of what we're going to talk about is the mid-year progress. So, just for everybody out there, there's different strategies that we utilize. Many of our classrooms are 18 to 1 or 30 to 2. We have some sites, there's some classrooms at Jefferson that went over the 18 to 1, so we also had some one-to-one tutoring taking place there for literacy and math. And at the beginning of the year at Washington, we also had, we were trying to find substitutes. We had many teachers who are out on maternity leave this year, and they all happened to be in kindergarten. Not all, but many. And so, as part of the strategy is we also brought in some tutors at the Washington site as well. And then, of course, we have coaching at all of our sites for part of AGR. And then, of course, you also received the data from each of the schools, and I hope you're hardened to see, especially at the K1 level. I think there's some, it's starting to show the phonemic awareness and phonics focus that we've had and starting to have a positive effect on the scores there, so.
Any questions or comments? Is there anything you need from the board at this time?
There is not. I think we are super excited about coming back this spring because I feel like we've got some traction going on in our schools, and so we're excited to see where this is all going to go, and we're excited to see you in June and share the final results.
Wonderful. Mrs. Wyman, and then Mr. Carnes.
I think it's been really exciting to hear every one of the principals that has started our meetings talk pretty much the same line about literacy, about math scores, which tells me that everyone is getting the same message, and that is so important for our district going forward, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Carnes?
Yeah, so this one is somewhat personal for myself because, and I guess I just want to say it, we opened and enrolled my youngest into Roosevelt due to the lower class sizes, and to see the benefit of that. And I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but he has already exceeded his stretch goal halfway through the year. And so, the achievement that is possible there and is there is amazing. So, I'm glad that, you know, you talk about, you know, what's possible and what we can do to catch up, as Mr. White talked about literacy, right? It matters. So, from my personal standpoint, it's good to see, so thank you.
Yeah, I will, celebrating the principals and the teachers and everybody's efforts out there because truly, it is a concerted effort that we're all pushing in the same direction, so it's very exciting.
Thank you, Dr. Rowan.
Thank you.
And thank you to the principals who helped prepare tonight's report. Appreciate that, and all the good work going on in the buildings. And we will look forward to the spring update. Thank you. Next, we have update on naming of the new elementary school to Menominee Elementary School with Dr. Davis.
Yes, so just wanted to follow up from our last meeting. We were very fortunate to be able to get on the agenda for the Menominee Nation Legislature to be able be able to get on the agenda for the Menominee Nation Legislature to be able to discuss with them and hoped for the vote that we'd received approval for the Menominee Elementary School name. So really excited about that. So Dr. Herzog, myself, and then Principal Galiyazi were able to attend that meeting, had, just gave our presentation and asked, you know, for, you know, really a partnership and that we're hoping to be able to have an enduring partnership with them, that we can both learn together. And that's really, I think, what the only condition that I heard was just maintaining that partnership and being able to work together. And so we're currently just doing some outreach to get point people on both sides to be able to just begin our work, which begins with our branding, you know, schools, school mascots, school symbols, school colors, all of those types of things that we would want to work collaboratively with. And then just begin to think about what educational opportunities we can use. So they had hoped that they would be invited, and we assured them that they would be invited to the groundbreaking, the ribbon cutting and all the other activities that were going on. And just really excited and just thankful for that partnership moving forward. So I just wanted to close that loop because that certainly was a condition of our naming, to have that passed by the tribal legislature, and that happened last Thursday night.
So can I ask a question about that? If I remember correctly, though, the process is now goes to the tribal board? Is that how it works?
So originally, my original communication was that it would start in a culture, Culture and Language Committee, and that they would make a recommendation to the tribal legislature. We actually just got expedited to the tribal legislature. So the actual approval then happened on last Thursday, so with the tribal legislature.
Oh, okay.
So we were able to get on their agenda and get that approval right away. So, and they were very gracious to be able to help us out with that, ask some questions and provided a little bit of background. And yeah, it's going to be a really neat opportunity.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. I think I misunderstood that. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I believe the vote was unanimous, and I sensed a great commitment to collaborating and working with the district, sharing information on the history of the Menominee and also noting that they are renowned for their woodworking efforts and hoping that we will be able to put into the design of the new building, Menominee Elementary School, some aspects of the excellent wood that they produce. If you've been to the Menominee, what had been, the Menominee Nation Arena, now the Oshkosh Arena, I believe that floor was largely, largely came from Menominee workers. So, very exciting. So thank you, Dr. Davis and Principal Galiyazi.
Yeah, thanks.
We can move forward now with that. All right. Next, we go into other reports. Mrs. Carlin was this board's delegate to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly held in January at the State Education Convention, and she wanted to do a brief sharing of her experience.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Herzog. And actually, I had asked if I could give this report at our last meeting, and Barb and I spoke on the phone, and I said, yes, I will bring it up during our discussion on WASB. And I got so caught up in hearing about all the great things you guys learned that I completely just forgot. So we're doing it tonight. And if my memory is not as sharp as it was, I would like to invite Dr. Herzog to add anything to my report.
Well, thank you.
So if I could summarize the WASB Delegate Assembly in one word, I would say unprecedented because it was unprecedented in not only the number of amendments that we had. And so just to give you an overview, we submit, remember when Annika Larson came and spoke to our board about voter education, and we said that we would submit a resolution to WASB, and we would put it forth to all 421 school districts in Wisconsin that we were supporting this resolution for voter education. And so that was one of the resolutions. And I'm happy to report that that one did pass. There was a lot of discussion on it, though, which kind of surprised me because, you know, the WASB resolutions are meant to be advisory, they're not policy. So there was discussion on, well, who's going to pay for that extra hour of voter education? And then there were amendments, like, we want to add that it's bipartisan, nonpartisan, nonpolitical voter education. And so we went in circles, kind of wordsmithing it, and I wanted to say, like, this is a red tie experience, you know? But I didn't know that anyone else would know what the red tie meant. So it did pass. Another one, so we had, there were nineteen resolutions, and we only voted on fifteen before we lost a quorum. So when I said unprecedented, it was unprecedented in the sense that we, it has never lost a quorum before. Depending on who you talked to, John Ashley said in the hundred and two years of WASB, he had not recalled that we had ever lost a quorum. But then Dr. Herzog had dinner with someone who said that he had remembered losing a quorum sometime twenty years ago. But it's never happened before. And this is, I couldn't remember if this is my third, second or third year serving as a delegate assembly because in 2020 it was canceled. And then in twenty, or 2022, it was virtual, and I attended, that was half virtual, half in person, and I remember being at that one. So this was really, this is my third one, I think.
I think so because Mr. Evans, Mr. Evans, I think, had served.
Yep. And so it had not, we went well beyond the allocated time. We were supposed to be done at 4:30. So it's unprecedented in the sense that I don't think we were done until close to six o'clock. I didn't see what time it was when we left. The one that received a lot of debate was on the societal issues, Resolution 2312. It was about increasing efforts of all levels of government, private organizations, businesses and families, and early intervention on other programs to solve harassment by, you know, you get the idea, economic status, poverty. And so one of the amendments for that was, I don't know, they want to take out the word bullying and harassment, and they didn't think that poverty should be in there. So it was like a lot of wordsmithing that I hadn't seen before either. The other debate that had a lot of conversation was on weapon possession. Most of the amendments were defeated, but there were at least five or six amendments. I lost count. And to give you an idea of some of the amendments put forth, one district wanted a retired police or military person to be able to possess firearms in school if they were volunteering. That resolution did not pass, but again, there was a lot of discussion that focused on how the resolution would impact schools that have skeet shooting or hunter safety classes, and how the resolution would apply into certain scenarios. Again, WASB resolutions are advisory, not mandatory. So that kind of surprised me, too. The school resolution on free lunches failed, and it failed solidly. The debate was centered on how, who would fund free lunches. Some were also against it because it would eliminate an opportunity to identify free reduced lunch students. Others opposed it because they think it would lead to a decline in food quality. Some felt if a family could afford a free lunch, they should pay for the meal. And it was a really interesting debate because there were strong feelings on both sides. And then we started discussing 2316 related to learning loss. And there was a suggestion on amendment to include mental health, discipline and attendance issues. And, you know, I was sitting in the front, so I didn't notice that people were trickling out. And then finally, you know, that's where my notes end, we lost quorum. And Dr. Herzog did a fantastic job navigating on the gavel, Robert's Rules of Orders, and it was very complicated. And so I was very proud to say that Dr. Herzog was on our board. So congratulations to you for managing that meeting. I'm sure three, three and a half, four hours, I don't even know, but it was a long meeting, and you did a fantastic job. And at this time, if you have anything to add, please do so, or anything I may have missed.
Well, I thank you for your kind words, but I had a lifeline at my fingertips, and that was Attorney Doug Woody from Boardman &amp; Clark, who was the official parliamentarian and knows Robert's Rules inside and out, or I would have really been in a bad way. The resolutions that go to the delegate assembly have been vetted by the Policy and Resolutions Committee, who look at, is this something relevant? Is this something that all 421 districts and the CISA should take a look at? So they're not vetted on the basis of the quality of what is submitted, or somebody's perhaps biased toward those. But the ones that did not get addressed were largely revisions of something already in the policy book, and it'll be up to next year's group to decide whether or not they want to deal with those. I was surprised at the reaction that the voter education piece got that originated from our students. It did pass, but there was a lot of debate on that, and I thought it would be something that would be relatively easy, but it didn't turn out that way. But I appreciate Mrs. Carlin's diligence in wading through all of those resolutions and spending the time and not getting up and leaving like others did. So she helped us maintain that quorum as long as possible. And the board of the State Association will be looking at some ways to make sure that we do a better job of orienting people to their purpose, which is not to debate whether a tie is red or magenta or cardinal in color, not to get into that level of wordsmithing, and also to be more realistic about the timeframe involved. So, all right.
I think at the end, when I called the question on the voter registration or education, I hope I didn't come across as a little bit frustrated because I was frustrated at that point. And I said, you know, this is a resolution that was drafted by students. Our students are telling us, and we are all serving students. And so after an hour debate, I said, I called the question. And so, and when it passed, I was like, oh, my goodness, like, yeah. And it passed solidly. I think it was 180 to, I don't know, something, but it was good. So.
So kudos to Annika and to Simone.
And to Simone and Annika, yes. We will have to make sure that they, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the delegate assembly? All right, then moving on. Mr. Peschel had initiated the concept of bringing more voice to our student reps to our board meetings. And so there were some visits to, or a visit to each of the two high schools. Dr. Davis and I participated in those, and the students have identified some topics that they want to bring forward for board consideration. And so Tessa is our lead presenter tonight on student report on college and future prep. And in your email, there should be an update that gives you the staff report for this. So if you didn't, if you missed that, it is in your, it should be in your inbox for your email. So Tessa, please, please take it away.
Yeah. So Owen is not here with me tonight, but we did work together on this presentation. And we reached out to juniors and seniors at both Oshkosh West and Oshkosh North, and we had about 150 responses, giving us some insight as to how students feel when it comes to their futures. So we surveyed them on four different topics. We have ACT, adulthood, college, and then career preparation, and just got some insight as to how they're feeling prepared and how their schools have prepared them. So first, we have some ACT data, and most students, we have zero being that they didn't feel prepared at all, and five feeling, being that they felt very prepared. And with ACT, most of them fell in that middle grounds. And then 60% of them said that they didn't get the score they were hoping to get, which I think is unfortunate. But also, is it that you didn't get the score you were hoping to get, or, you know, there's a max score that you can get? So, so looking at how the schools have prepared students, they said that their practicing really varied depending on the class. Some classes really focused on teaching them the types of questions and how to answer them, while other classes did not. So many students didn't really feel prepared at all by their school. But a lot of them attended optional after-school sessions or other outside-of-school classes. And we asked them to tell us what they think, or what they thought the school could have done to prepare them more. And a lot of them were unsure in answering that question, but they suggested to continue promoting optional sessions and promoting the outside-of-school practice opportunities that they might have. I don't, do you have anything to add, Ms. Conrad?
No, that's one, that's one area both North and West have been working on through using method test prep and some other strategies as far as how can we better prepare students? Because we were getting that feedback as well, as that they wanted more practices or ways to do that. So more to come. We tried out some different strategies this school year with our juniors that took place over the final exam prep-like period in the last month. So we'll see what the outcome is from there.
Next, we asked about adulthood. So students in general felt more prepared for adulthood, with most of them falling in a three or a five. And a lot of them really thought that the financial literacy classes at their schools helped prepare them for a big part of adulthood. And then also all the general skills that they've learned through classes, time management, problem solving, and others. And although a lot of them praised the financial literacy classes, they wanted even more practice managing their finances. And then also some family and consumer science-based education, so how to, you know, have a family and other big life skills.
And so coming up in March, I believe one of the board workshops is career and technical education. So we'll be talking more about family consumer sciences and some of the pieces we're putting into place in that particular course pathway. So family consumer science classes are actually very popular at both high schools.
And then moving on to college, most students fell in the middle range with being prepared for college or for receiving other higher education. And a lot of students really enjoyed the CAP classes as well as other college courses that are offered to high school students. They enjoyed having that college class experience, but still within their high school. They also really enjoyed the help of their counselors in applying to colleges and making good decisions with that. And then they also really liked ZELLO, and I know that helps prepare for many different aspects, not just the college.
Tessa, can you describe ZELLO?
Yes, please. Yeah, so ZELLO is a program, I don't know when it started, but I know I've been doing it all throughout my high school years. And it provides lessons for students about colleges and career preparations. And it's just these real short, really great lessons that teach all the different skills, and then provide surveys and different questionnaires to match you with careers and match you with colleges. I think it's been very helpful, and I know it's been really great for myself.
If I can piggyback off of that, we started, we've been using, it used to be called Career Cruising, and now it's called ZELLO. This is the program that travels through, takes a student grade six through 12, and really pulls together the academic and career planning portion of students, enabling them to be college, career and community ready. So you're right, it does, quote unquote, does a matchmaking service for you as far as what is the career cluster, career pathway that best fits your profile, along with information about post-secondary and along with careers that lead to that. So.
So students, they really liked the CAP classes, and they wanted even more options for those. And then guidance on application essays. I know some classes provide some guidance, but more, students would have appreciated more help in that area. And then help with whether or not college is even the right choice for them. Students, some students didn't know if they wanted to attend a tech school or a four-year college and wanted some knowledge on what's the difference between those and what would be right for them. And then the steps on applying for financial aid. I know some of our finance classes I know some of our finance classes help with this, but some students were still confused in that area. And finally, we looked at if students are prepared for joining the workforce. And overall, we had lots of students who expressed that they did feel very prepared for that. So students told us that a lot of their classes had taught them job skills, responsibility, time management, problem solving, and many more than that. And their classes also taught them about various different types of jobs that they might enjoy in the future. And they also really enjoyed being able to have work release that gave them more time to work and have that experience in high school. They asked that our schools teach them a little bit more about applying to jobs and then being interviewed for jobs, as well as provided job shadowing opportunities for them.
And that's one area we're working on right now in our junior financial literacy classes. With COVID, having like outside businesses or individuals coming in and doing mock interviews, et cetera, wasn't exactly the same doing it virtually or doing it at all. And so we are working with our Chamber of Commerce, along with SHRM, to bolster up resume writing and sharpening up those interview skills. So more to come on that.
That is all I have, so I'll open it up to questions or comments.
Go ahead, Mrs. Wyman.
When you got done with all of the, putting all the information together, do you feel it was a good project? Was it a worthwhile project to do?
Yes, I think so. I think a lot of the information we got from students was really interesting. And it's good to hear from the students as well, what they are thinking. I know reading through a lot of these comments, so much of it was, students were saying they wanted teachers and their schools to do one thing, and others were saying that they were doing that thing, and they were doing it well. So I think a big piece of this is just promoting all the different opportunities kids have to learn these skills, because a lot of them are saying that the schools aren't providing them, and they are providing them.
So I can say that it was pretty insightful, and that we're going to be sharing this information with our staff that have direct oversight and leadership in these areas to help us refine and sharpen things up.
I had a quick question about, how was the survey conducted? And where, how were able, students able to provide input?
Yeah, so we sent this out via Google Forms to all juniors and seniors at Ashgash West and Ashgash North. And it was entirely voluntary and anonymous.
Awesome, thank you.
I noticed that they mentioned CAP courses, or CAP classes. Was there any mention of AP?
I didn't see that, no.
Okay, so it was more of a focus on CAP, I was just curious.
I was going to ask a follow-up question about the CAP courses that I received recently from a community member, and that is, for students who do not stay in Wisconsin, that go to a university in another state, what's our transfer rate of the CAP courses? Are those able to follow them?
Funny that you ask that question, because I actually just had an individual talk to me today about what does transferability look like. And so just like with any post-secondary institution, UW System is pretty good about transferring credits within it, but there's still, it's still a university. They're getting better, but it's always look at the Transfer Wizard. That is, there is a link on the UWO CAP site that'll allow you to take a look at what will transfer where and how. But the bottom line is, is that any time that you're taking a course taught by adjunct faculty, college level, et cetera, the experience that you're getting, and whether that credit transfers exactly the way you want it or not, it's that experience and that rigor of that course that's helping you be prepared for whatever you would like to do after graduation. So it's, it depends. And so you really need, you really do need to be thinking about and be savvy about where you want to take those credits. And everybody, we were always upfront with how those credits transfer.
Yeah. Can I add to that really quick?
Sure, absolutely.
So having had two college-age sons who had CAP classes and then ended up out of state, I can say, you know, I didn't have a high expectation. A lot of the credits would transfer to St. Thomas in Minneapolis or Boulder in Colorado. And yet I was pleasantly surprised that my oldest son was able to reduce a whole semester, and St. Thomas accepted the credits. And then my middle son, Boulder, has accepted a lot of his credits too. So he doesn't have to take some of the courses and everything. So I, I think that's a really good question, because even while I was paying these expensive CAP fees, I was wondering if it was going to be worth it. I mean, and they're not expensive, by the way, considering what we get. I mean, but it is a chunk of change for families, but considering what you get in return, it's a great value. So, but they, I was pleasantly surprised.
Also keep in mind that at both high schools, we have Fox Valley Technical College credits as well in written communications and oral inter, oral and speech from Fox Valley Technical College. And so both of those are also direct transfers into UW System. And UWO just recently announced their transfer agreements to GenEd's into their four-year degree programs. So there is a lot more collaboration than there used to be when it comes to transferring, transferring credits. But if, if anybody has any questions, your school counselors can help with that. The CAP office can help with that. We can always help with that here at Central Office, too.
And I just want to clarify, when I said it was expensive, it's really not in comparison. Because when you save a semester's worth of college, that's upwards of thousands of dollars. And we are offering these CAP courses for a fraction of that. And so they are worth it, for sure, is my opinion.
I was excited to hear about the ACT prep stuff in particular, because, you know, in the past, you know, kids or families might have to pay for that stuff through, I mean, if it's not offered through the district. You, I know like some of my cousins or whatever would get that material, and they would do it privately or whatever, and it would really help their score, or it did really help their score. So I'm excited that kids in our district have that opportunity, because those scores, you know, matter. And that's a, you know, a thing that all kids, I think, should have access to so that, you know, more kids can have the option of getting into whatever college they might want. So, and the ZELLO thing was interesting. I like, I like that, because I feel like we're in, education as a whole is kind of in like a transition, and, you know, to some degree right now, because kids are choosing all kinds of different things that they want to do, you know? And I, there's just a lot of different options. I remember when I was in school, there was a big push, you need to go to four-year university, you need to go to four-year university. And now, you know, there's all kinds of different trades and different things that kids are interested in, which I think is probably being reflected in, or potentially being reflected in the enrollment numbers that they're seeing in some universities right now, because kids are picking different options. And the other piece of data that I took away from it that was interesting is, kids want to learn how to become more responsible adults. You know, they want to be, they want that from us. And I think like, you know, that's something that we need to do our best to try to provide them, so that they can be good, you know, financially responsible and good family members and good members of society. It's, it's encouraging that kids want that, and that was in the survey. So those are my takeaways.
Mr. Carr?
Speaking of the ACT, there's a March 4th ACT workshop that's $99 for kids to attend. Are there opportunities there for free and reduced lunch with any kind of discount with that? Is that?
I'm not familiar which workshop that is on March 4th, so.
It was posted on the Ashgash West, one of their Instagram pages for that. And so when I heard that was an op, you know, that's, that's significant dollars. And I don't know what the connection is with the, with the school district, but that could price some people out too when we're looking at that. So, and then, it was mentioned CAP, but I also had the same thought on the AP classes. Are we always looking for more options to add more AP classes or different ones? I think right now we have three history options, but there's not a fourth one if somebody wanted to take all four years, right? So are we always looking for opportunities for that?
So when we start taking a look at AP versus CAP, we're just starting to look at, what does that, what does that capstone dual-credit option look like, and how does it fit within our course pathways? So for our social studies department, they have really, that's where the majority of our AP or advanced placement courses are, because that fits within their course, like within their course pathway and with their curriculum pieces. We also have AP, Proven Stats, which is inside of our math courses. But there's other content areas where we've had great partnerships with UW Ashgash and Fox Valley Technical College, and those have fit better into our course pathways. So it's not, it's not either or, it's what's been fitting into our partnerships and what's fit into our course pathways, if that makes sense.
That is.
I have a couple of financial-related questions. So if, if a student wants to retake the essay, the ACT, what is the cost?
I don't know the current cost off the top of my head, but I do know that when they take it with us as an 11th grader, that is free of charge, and that's part of our state assessment system.
But if, if a student does want to take, retake the test, there is a cost involved. Okay, so that's part of my question. And then the other part is, on the CAP classes, trying to look at this, we just had a listening session, and the, the topic of looking at things through an equity lens came up, so I'm, I'm in that mode right now. So if there's a cost for retaking the ACT, and there's a cost for CAP classes, even though Mrs. Carlin has indicated it's lower than taking that class at the college level, where is the equity built in for students who perhaps struggle to pay for the retaking or pay for the CAP course?
So for CAP courses, our CAP courses have been for the past few years approximately $100 per credit, so a three-credit course is $300. Students that qualify for free and reduced lunch, it's $50 a credit or $150. Currently, right now, the, we pay, we, students pay directly to UW Ashgash, and so they can do that, they can apply either for scholarship money, they can do that on a payment plan, et cetera. At one point in time, I believe it was in 2015, there was CAP courses or anything that was dual enrollment was, like, was free of charge. And then that shifted back once the state legislator figured out the cost of the UW system and what that looks like from those pieces. And so that's where they landed. So any student can take any CAP course, they may not be having it transcripted to the UW Ashgash, but they can take it for high school credit only. And all of our Fox Valley Tech dual-credit courses, such as written communications and speech, or interpersonal communication, there we go, actually have no costs tied to them in our transcripted credits. So there's many different ways that we can, we can work with students, we can work with families when it comes to accessing those opportunities.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I have a thought. When we are reviewing this stuff, it's always really helpful, you know, when we're talking about it, when I hear the cost. You know, I mean, especially after your first report, when we were talking about kids not being able to afford to go to dances and things like that. Like, when we talk about like preparation courses and things like that, the costs associated with it, it's always helpful for my thought process during the meetings and even in the reports, because that helps me relate to the issue more. And I think like, you know, our thought process, if we're going to get at making things more accessible and getting kids more access to things, that has to be a focus of ours. You know, as far as any of these reports, so that we can really see how much of a barrier the, it may or may not be. Because all that stuff matters, you know what I mean? It's important. So that's my thought.
Yeah, so Tessa, we could certainly work with you and Owen on that, you know, with our directors, who have been your point people. So depending on how, what the report is and how it comes up, we'll be able to support that.
No, it's an awesome report. You know what I mean? I'm just thinking like for all of us, like, because most of our questions, when we're thinking about equity issues or access for kids, and anything that's involved in this district, you know, like, can a kid do extracurricular? Can a kid take an ACT prep? You know, like, what are the reasons behind that? You know what I mean? Is the financial component a reason? Is the access a reason? You know, like, if we're going to really dig into this stuff to try to do the best work that we can, you know, I think we need to continually look at it from a number of different lenses as to why access may or may not be restricted, I guess.
Other comments or questions? I guess my, my final thought on this is, as with the, the one report last time on social and emotional learning, what, where, where do we go next? And I, I know I requested after the last, the report last time, that we have a follow-up in the spring. So I'm guessing, not guessing, I am asking for a follow-up in the spring, because it looks to me like many of these would be addressed at the building level. I see a potential for the board to respond in terms of more guidance on if college is the right choice, students want more guidance on application essays. We heard last time that there was an interest in more counselors, social workers, and psychologists. I could see a potential request for additional counseling services, however that might be provided, to address those two in particular. So, but I'd like to see some progress made before the end of this school year. I know that's asking a lot, but at least if there could be a plan in place, if maybe financial literacy is going to be approached differently, or there's going to be a different way to make sure that all students know about the CAP classes, so that more students can be prepared to enroll at some point down the line. Availability of job application and interview skills, at least if there's a plan, it doesn't have to be in place by the spring. But if we could have a short, I'd like to see a short overview of what progress has been made.
How about a board workshop on March 8th?
Well, that's coming up really quick.
Yes, so that.
That's already prepared.
That was timed out. I think what, and I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Tessa and Owen about this, one of the things that, that I was thinking about based on the feedback from the last meeting, is we don't have a topic in May, specifically, we have workshops. So the thought was maybe in May we can come, which would be their last meeting.
Sure.
To come with a summary of, you know, where is the information, you know, that they've provided, where's that gone, as Scott had said, you know, related to bring that back to counselors. And, because the, the action plans really need to be developed at the building level. And so those will, those will take some time, but where do those land and how, you know, what is the plan to be able to integrate that feedback? I think, just circling back on that feedback loop. So I think, I think it would be a natural cadence for us to be able to come back in May as we're moving forward, to be able to say like, all right, so we looked at some things. And this is our first time through it. I think, Tessa, I just want to thank you. I think you guys have done a great job for being, you know, the pioneers of this endeavor. You guys have done some great, a great job, and, you know, has provided some input that we'll be able to take back to both schools. So thank you for your work on that.
Appreciate it.
That's great.
Especially having you go solo.
Right.
Well done.
Very good, thank you. Okay, moving on, we would be looking at non-agenda-related public forum and agenda-related public forum. I don't believe we have any who signed in for those. All right. We can move on to our one and only workshop for tonight, Staff Engagement, Goal Number Three Under the Strategic Plan, with Sabrina Johnson and a supporting cast.
Yeah, so, so I'll get things kicked off tonight. So we wanted to, again, introduce Sabrina Johnson to our, to our team. So this is her, her first workshop as we're, as we're moving forward. Sabrina's done a great job of, of, you know, really digging in to learn as much as you can and listen, related to all things HR across the district, which certainly is a big, big responsibility. We're really proud and excited at the same time to be able to talk about tonight, one of the endeavors that we've been working on, specifically around staff engagement. So that falls under Sabrina's direction in her HR office. We know it also. We know it also touches every part of our organization as we're moving forward. So, so just wanted to be able to provide some background and to, I'll kick things off and give you a little bit of history and some of our results, and then Sabrina will talk about how we're taking action on these results and moving forward, and we have a couple of examples tonight. So, so just positioning why staff engagement matters and where it is within our, our core values, so engage students and staff specifically is called out within our values. So it's something that we certainly, I think, have always valued and just started measuring over the last couple of years. So we wanted to give you a little bit of detail on what that measurement is, and then again, how that's, how that's been used. And also starting, you know, why, why it matters for us, specifically within our strategic plan, employee engagement directly impacts two of the things that we hold most dear, staff recruitment and retention. Both are critical, and especially in this job market as we're moving forward. And, and also looking at student performance. So we believe that the indicators that you'll see tonight are going to be leading indicators for increases in student performance, specifically academics and math and literacy as we're moving forward. So we really, we're encouraged by this work, we think this is an indication of some increases that we'll be able to see over time. So that's getting at kind of the, the why behind it. So looking at why staff engagement is important in general, so we have contracted with CISA Six to do a Gallup survey on staff engagement. So the advantage of having a Gallup survey is that you have it across many industries, it's not just for Oshkosh or within our area, within our industry, but it looks at industries across the world, and certainly Gallup is a, a broad surveyor and has decades' worth of experience. So, and recent Gallup analysis finds that 48% of America's working population is actively, is actively job searching or watching for opportunities. So 10% actively searching and 38% for watching for possibilities. So that makes, that means that as you would apply that to the district, you know, we would really have a situation where you really need to be constantly recruiting your own people, right? And really being able to make sure that you're in touch with what your workforce needs as you're moving forward. And looking at the reasons why people are looking at considering leaving, a lot of times it would be pay and benefits, or, you know, I don't like that boss, you know, type of thing. So that falls in a smaller percentage compared to engagement and culture, and why people are looking at leaving. And so if you're, if we're going to really focus on recruitment and retention, we want to make sure, based on this data, we want to make sure that engagement and culture is one of the things that we are really primarily focused on, and that has a, a lot of different areas that we'll talk about in just a second about how we've gone through. But wanted to provide you just a little bit of background beyond the tool that, that we use. So as, as I mentioned, so we contract with CISA Six to do a survey called the Gallup Q-12 Employee Engagement Survey. So that's the tool that we use. We've been using that for the last two years. So that survey, again, is conducted by CISA Six, so it's an independent party to provide some objectivity in that process. We started that in January of '21. As part of our commitment to listening and learning for employees, we conduct that survey twice a year, so once in the fall and once in the spring. So that gives us an opportunity every year to, to one, check in on where our employees are, but also have an opportunity to make some progress within all of our work groups between that fall and that spring survey, and then be able to just refine our practices as directors and leaders in the organization as we're moving forward. So the goal of the Q-12 survey is to start a conversation between leaders and each of their employees. The survey allows employees to communicate their needs, allowing teams to know which needs they should work to meet. So again, the, and this is something that, that Patty Vicman, Patty Vicman had brought up, I think, in a previous board, in some of our board retreat work. When we're looking at surveys and data like this, that the surveys help refine us and don't define us. And I think that refinement piece is really important for us as we're moving forward. So all of our direct, anybody who's supervising anybody in our system has this feedback from the people that they're supervising, and really is an opportunity for us to gain that feedback and then help problem-solve with our, with our employees. So the next slide shows, gives you an example of what the survey actually measures. So these are questions that are coming from, again, decades' worth of, of research from Gallup, and identifying 12 needs that managers can meet to improve employees' productivity. And so on the survey, each employee then answers questions that relate to all 12 of these, answer all 12 of these questions. And the questions are, again, strategically put together, addressing different needs and different levels of employees' needs in order for them to be engaged. Working from basic skills to individual contributions, to their ability to work in teams, and then their ability individually to feel growth in that organization. So it's really focused on the engagement and how the employee feels like they're engaged and how their director engages them. That's really the focus. So we've spent some time really being deliberate about defining what is being measured, because many times in an organization, you know, people aren't happy about, you know, heard about something going on down at central office or down at another school, and they want to use a survey to kind of vent about that. And we really have, have refined it over the last year to have, have them report out on what is it really between you and your supervisor, like, do you feel that level of engagement? Because that's the space that we can control. That's where everybody can speak to and be able to provide that agency and that feedback for all of our staff has been really important, as you'll, as you'll see, so. So what have the results been for us? Again, taking those 12 questions, and this has been across the system, starting in, in January '21. So again, we have four, four surveys that we have to work from, and as you work left to right, you'll see the progress that we've been able to make. So when you look at the aggregate across the district, you can see the number of respondents on the bottom, so that's varied a little bit, but it's pretty, pretty close to being, well, it is valid information based on the, on the number of respondents that, that you'll see there. So there's three categories that, based on the responses that the employees give, three categories that Gallup would consider an employee in, either being engaged, not engaged, or actively disengaged. And so those are the, the buckets, if you will, where employees fall within. So you'll see the national average for a typical workplace is about 30% of your staff being engaged. So across all industries, 30%, which is, you know, really a, somewhat of a demoralizing number, when you think about, like, only 30% of people in most organizations are, are engaged in their work. And certainly something that we feel, because of the moral calling of education, that we have an opportunity to really boost that number as we're moving forward. So you can see what our numbers were, starting the first couple of times that we took this survey. And I put in there just, what I think have been some contributing factors to some of, some of our early performances and some of what we've improved. So certainly, I think, the, the first survey, as we talked to employees within the district, many people believed that that first survey was just related to leadership concerns and getting feedback on that. And even if that wasn't the intention, that's how it was, was perceived. And so between that first survey and then the, the survey that we took in the fall, I think there was a lack of clarity on exactly who we're talking about. Like, when you're giving feedback, you're not giving feedback on somebody that you don't report to. It really shouldn't be that person that you report to. So our work in defining those measures, I think, has really led to some clarity and some really good conversations that you'll hear in just a second, related to employee, improving employee engagement. So really proud to report that over our last two assessments for Gallup, we're able to improve our engaged number from 28, which would be, again, right around 30, which would be the average number, to 45 last spring, and to increase that this fall to 47%. So 47% of the respondents indicated that they were engaged as employees. And so that's, when you're 17% over that national, that national average across all industries, that's really something to be proud of, and something that, in working with Ted Nitsky at, at CISA Six, really commended our work, our leaders' work across the system on being able to get to that point. Certainly, we're not satisfied with that, you know, we want to be able to continue to bump that up. But the other number that we look at is actively disengaged. So how many people are not only just not engaged, but are, like, actively working against the mission? And so we were able to more than cut that in half, from 19% in the fall of '21, down to 8% this fall. So again, really putting the right people in the right places, and then, you know, if there's disconnects between what their, what job responsibilities is and what people want to do to help support them get to a place where they will be productive. Sometimes that's in the system, sometimes that's not into the system, outside of the system, but we always want to be able to support people to be in places where they can be productive and engaged as we move forward. So really proud of that, of that data, and it's really a credit to our leaders across the system, really anybody who's supervising anybody else formally, really has done a great job in that work. So I'll pause there. Any, any questions about these, about these results? Or the Q-12 survey at all in general? So just a couple of takeaways and celebrations. As I had mentioned, OASD is, is almost 20% higher work engagement than the national workplace average, being at 47%. And in one year, we've been able to reduce our actively disengaged employees by more than half, from 19% to 8%. So really important celebrations, which is just the beginning of our work together, but I think you can, it's, it's always satisfying to be able to see that progress in the, in the data as we're moving forward, so. All right, so with that, I'll turn it over to Sabrina, and she can talk about, so what? So you get these numbers and you make some progress, so like, what do we do with them? How do we put action plans together? So she'll talk about that cycle, and then we have a couple of really good examples from leaders who are, you know, really helping these numbers refine their practice.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. So next, we'll look at, at the engagement survey cycle. As shared, we conduct two surveys a year, first in the fall, where we gain a baseline, and the next in the spring, which helps us get a pulse on where we are, are we moving that needle? So once the surveys are completed and the results are in, the superintendent shares it via an all-employee email with regards to the results shared on a district-wide level. At that same time, district and school administrators are shared their team results. So once they have that information, they then start having the conversations with their staff and their direct reports, and then they create teams to engage in meaningful conversations to develop action plans based on identified areas of improvement. So we, as continuous improvement, our Oshkosh-area school district administrators have been engaged in continuous improvement training with Ted Nitsky, as Dr. Davis shared with us. And some of the examples or the tools that we have learned about are root cause analysis, change management, and rapid cycles of improvement, just to name a few. So employees throughout the district are engaged in this process of improving their workplace engagement, and what I wanted to do is I reached out to principals at each of the levels, both at elementary and secondary. Our secondary principals aren't able to be with us today, tonight, they're at a conference, so I'll be sharing their examples, but as Dr. Davis shared, I have a couple of guests here to share theirs. So the first, I reached out to Joe at South Park Middle School with regards to identifying staff needs. And what he shared with me is that the survey shared with him that there were staff that wanted to participate in more professional development. So the way in which he was able to do this is he strategically, strategically, excuse me, shifted some funds around to allow individuals to continue with professional development. And some examples that he shared with me were they were able to go to Wisconsin State Reading Association, state science and tech ed conferences, and conscious discipline. Next, I'll turn it over to Principal Amanda Pataza from Jefferson.
Excuse me, if I could just interject here. This timing is, is great, because I visited South Park today, and I had a chance to talk directly with Principal Joe Pitch, and he essentially shared with me what he shared with you, so that by shifting budgets around, he was able to supplement the cost of attending the State Reading Association Conference, which is going on now, and so there will be four teachers, I believe, from South Park attending that particular event. And staff have had ownership, it sounds like, in the process, and they're seeing the results, and the focus is on literacy, which ties in the district goal, and so it was, it was beautiful to hear how they're using these data to make a difference with staff, to increase their engagement, and ultimately increase student growth and, and reading scores over there. Thank you.
Great. Well, good evening, everybody. Through our process of the Gallup, we reiterated to our staff and we learned throughout this process that not one person alone is responsible for the engagement of our buildings. It's really a collective piece. So that staff engagement encompasses not only the attitudes, the expected behaviors, but the values that impact and drive our school and how it operates. So after analyzing some of our results at Jefferson, we discovered that our efforts to improve our engagement will only be successful if we have support and that ownership piece in the process, which is why at Jefferson, we moved to a school improvement committee and broke off into subcommittees. So every one of our staff members are able to pick one of the subcommittees that you see listed on the screen, that's school culture, acknowledgement, and family engagement, and pick one that really resonates with them, that they feel like their talents could be best utilized. These subcommittees promote involvement for them and really give them the opportunity to engage as a stakeholder and provide some of those authentic opportunities for them to provide that participation and be a part of that shared decision-making, just like you were stating, Ms. Herzog. So I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you today, to talk about what Jefferson's doing in terms of those action steps, because when we have a highly engaged staff, we know that goes hand in hand and correlates with highly engaged students. So thank you so much for allowing me to come and talk to you tonight.
Thanks for coming.
That's awesome.
So then I also wanted just an opportunity for Dr. Brown to be able to talk about her work. So as we're, as we're performing this at a district level, right, so the building, the building is pretty easy, because you have a designated, you know, roof over your head, but like I said, we also have, anybody who supervises people has an opportunity to be able to get that feedback also. So we've spent some time in our surveys, as, again, we're on our fourth survey, also just making sure that we get the, the grouping right and that we, HR tracks who is exactly supervising who, and just making sure we get all, all that sorted out. So I just wanted Dr. Brown just to provide, just an opportunity to talk about, you know, that organization and, and what she's been able to do through this process.
Yeah, so the, the people I oversee, it ranges. So I have peer coaches, I have director coordinators, and I have principals, so very different types of groups. So I took the results and I'm sharing that with them. I've only met with one of the groups. One of the groups was canceled because of something that came up as an emergency, so that's scheduled for next week now. But one of the groups that I met with, we just went through the process of going through the results, and then what, whatever areas were the lowest is really saying, okay, so what's, what are some of the feedback pieces that we can move on? And then to come up with an action plan around those, that, around those pieces. And so that's what we did. It was, like, one of the groups, it was very celebratory, like, of the things that are happening, not only with the team, but as a team of how we're moving forward. And then also to just find out what it is, what their needs were. And so one of the needs was really around a financial piece, because they're using their own money sometimes in order to work with teachers, because, well, it's obviously the peer coaches. So they support peer coaches and they want to do things to help recognize them in different ways, and they have been very fortunate. Teresa Duran has been a positive support with some of the grants to help support. However, there are some needs there yet, and so that's one of the areas that I'm going to be supporting in a different way and finding out how I can get behind that. So we talked about that, but it was really about just what we do on a daily day of, daily as a team, and how we move things forward in our district to continue not only positive leadership within our group, but around the entire district. So, yeah, and so there will be more. As you can imagine, each group is very different, and when you look at the comments, you can see that the directors, coordinators versus- And when you look at the comments, you can see that the directors, coordinators versus peer coaches versus principals have very different perspectives on what their needs are. And so each one, that's why I'm meeting with them separate, is to really wrap around what they need in order to lift, lift our team. So.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the board?
Okay, one more from Oshkosh West.
I'm so sorry.
I'm so sorry. And then lastly, I was able to connect with Principal Erin Cole with regards to creating a self-engagement plan. I was really excited to have my conversation because she actually pulled this tool that we learned about, the hierarchy of needs applied to employee engagement. And what she shared with me is she met with her employees and asked them to look at the different levels of engagement, one being highly engaged, two, five, not engaged, and asked that they look at each of the details under each of them and circle where they feel they best fit within this pyramid. Along with this pyramid, there were other information that was on a placemat that they created for each of their employees. So it had tips on how to work with me, how to connect with their colleagues. And what they did is they laminated each of these placemats, excuse me. And what they did is they took them to all of their team meetings, so that way they were able to share where they were with their engagement, but also tools on how to work with one another. And she did share with me that they're going to be bringing these placemats back this month to come together to see if they're still at that same place of the pyramid, if they feel that they've moved up, so they've been, excuse me, using the resource with regards to connecting to one another as colleagues. And next steps in ongoing continuous improvement. The rollout for our district's upcoming continuous improvement plan will actually be at our next board meeting on February 22nd. So just wanted to share that there'll be more information coming in the next couple weeks.
And then just to wrap it up, one of the, as far as the presentation goes, there's been some really nice synergy again between, you know, Sabrina coming on and being able to, to really kind of listen and have some data points to be able to work from. But then just the empowerment of every, every person in this organization being responsible for their own engagement and then having a, a way to be able to express that and be able to engage in a conversation. Because we're so busy doing the day-to-day work many times, sometimes it's that personal side that gets lost. So this is really a chance for us to pause and for leaders to be able to reengage staff. So it's really been, it's really been powerful. And the translation between what we're doing with the data and also the continuous improvement, continuous improvement, skill sets that we're building with our administrators, one of them being really simply, you know, looking from, you know, what's your desired, or what's your current state right now and what's that data telling you and where do you want to go? And just having a stepped process and being able to engage our staff with that, creating that path to that desired step. It's been something really simple and something that most of us have been trained in before, but the application right now is just right on, because it gives us a simple assessment that we know we can depend on and some training that we can try out and then we can collaborate at our admin team meetings and then we can get better at as we're moving forward. So I'm just, I'm really excited because I think it provides some, some good synergy for the district and I think, again, is a, is a leading indicator. We've seen the progress already and, and we believe that this will be a leading indicator for us for improved student results as we're moving forward, so.
Mr. Carrons?
I like the last thing you said, because that's what I was kind of, when we did school report cards in December, one of the questions I asked you was, how did the staff take it? And seeing the engagement and the reaction shows it how committed they are, right? Because some of the schools didn't, didn't do as well as they would have hoped, and that's fair to say. But when you see the, kind of the, the fire in them to, to turn it around, I mean, that, that gives you hope that the whole process we're building with, with literacy and everything else is going to come through, right?
Absolutely. And this is an important, an important tool. And, I mean, all of our schools are doing that. Amanda, I will just raise up as a really good example of somebody that's always willing to dig in, no matter what the results are, we're always going to take responsibility. And you're all, we're all going to have an opportunity to be able to give feedback and dig in. Like she's a really good live example for us here tonight of somebody that really lives that on a, on a daily basis. And so, and that's again going, going on across the system. But we have to be deliberate about that. And, and these, these measures are something that really help us be able to have those conversations.
I would, just to add one more thing to that. In my, my current, in my job, we're, we're going through something that is the importance of retaining your employees and the things you can do and how important that is and how much it costs to, to lose employees and to retrain and bring them in, right? And so we did the 4.7% CPI raise last year. That's a big step. I hear Drew talking about surpluses. My brain immediately goes towards, how do we invest that into our staff? How do we keep our staff happy? I don't want staff looking to leave. It's a market that people can leave. There's a lot of options. And I just don't want to give them a, a reason to. So anything that we can do, it's, it's simple. And sometimes I get frustrated because I, I watch just in the world that people think it's complicated to keep employees. It's not that complicated. You know, you take care of them, you pay them, you give them good benefits, you give them safe places to work. And, and leaders who want to listen to them, it's not difficult. So I give you guys kudos for that and I, I challenge us all to do better, you know, with them.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that. And the slide that, that we had up here previously that showed the Gallup survey, right, was, was a, I keep going back. One more. So that's, that's the, that's the slide that jumps to me, right? Is that like it's, it's engagement and culture. And it doesn't cost anything to smile at somebody, it doesn't cost anything to ask a question. And we just need to be really deliberate and structured in that process, right? As we're, as we're moving forward. Because, you know, we're not always going to be able to pay everybody, everything that everybody thinks they, they deserve, right? I mean, there's always going to be a place where there's always going to be a little bit more money, a little bit more, more benefits. We absolutely need be, need to be competitive. Our, our advantage that we're building here is our culture of engagement. Like that is the sweet spot for us to be able to retain. And we know that the best way to recruit high-quality staff is to have high-quality staff, say what a great place this is to work, and why don't you come and join me? Right? Like you, you recruit people through other people. And that's the way that we can sustain excellence and, and move forward as, as a, as a district. And that, that's, that's really what that slide, you know, tells me and through, you know, leaders like Amanda and Kim are really, you know, exemplifying that on a, on a daily basis. And you can't, you can't outpay that. I'm telling you, you absolutely cannot do it. And I know firsthand of examples in this district of people that are staying and turning down really good opportunities that they probably should pursue because of some of the work that's going on here. So it's, it's an exciting time.
Mrs. Lee?
I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Davis and Ms. Johnson earlier today on just this topic. And I just want to say that I have confidence in our conversation, you know, this was one of the topics. And related to that, you know, just our, the social groups that we're creating, you know, sense of belonging for employees. And then related to that, recruiting and retaining diverse talent. And so I, I felt that the conversation was really productive and I think that we're having the right conversations, thinking creatively about how to, how to kind of jigsaw some of the issues that we're seeing. And so I just wanted to give kudos to both of you for, you know, engaging in that conversation as well.
Yeah.
Mrs. Carlin?
I'm going to ask the question that was asked in our listening session tonight. And we had someone come and speak and ask, they had seen the slides on this workshop and they were wondering where equity fits into this process. And Dr. Davis has, I'll give you the opportunity to answer, because we had said that it's intertwined and the non-negotiables that we've been talking about with our equity work are rooted in this, this process. So anyone take it?
Yeah, so I'll start and feel free to, to kind of, again, I, I think at, at the very root of, of equity is access, right? And the ability for you to be able to be empowered, to help your own situation, and to be able to work through an improved work environment, be creative and contribute to something larger, right? And so part of what this process does is allows all employees to be able to have access, direct access to their, to their supervisor and the expectation from my office that all supervisors are following up on these numbers and engaging in these conversations. So I, I think at its very core, again, of equity is this access of this constant expectation of a conversation. And that, that will happen as long as I'm here. And I, I think that's really important as we're, as we're moving forward. And I think it helped lead, I think in that environment, we can get to a place where we can be more creative, where we can think about different, bringing in different perspectives. And as we diversify our thoughts and our personnel that we bring in, that's going to do nothing but strengthen us as we're, as we're moving forward. So again, I, equity is baked in everything that we do, but I, I think this is a natural place for us to, to be able to really excel. So I don't know if you guys.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, when I think about the Gallup and, you know, people being engaged, I think the big piece is people listening and being responsive to whatever is happening and being able to move that. And I feel like that is the key of our equity work, is really truly hearing, seeing, and being able to respond and be responsive to the situation.
Absolutely.
So I feel like all of that does go together.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think my, one of my takeaways for tonight is that we've had two very good reports, the student report on college and future prep, and then this one on the Gallup survey, indicating that we've invited people to provide feedback or input, but we don't leave it there. We take it to another step, to another level. We look at what do we do with this information? How do we use this information? And then there are plans developed to, in this case, to change the narrative, to decrease the number of people who are not engaged and to increase the number who are engaged. And so it becomes a teaching tool in this case, because as Dr. Davis pointed out, each one of us is responsible for our own engagement. It's not something that should be done to us, it's something that we should participate in and carve out and, and own. And with the student survey, the next steps are, okay, so how do we respond as a system? We've heard from our, from our people, and now we need to, we need to do something with that data that's meaningful and we'll get back to the students. So I like the approach used tonight. I don't know if that was deliberately planned that way, but I think it worked out and I could see the connections. So thank you for that. Anyone else? Well, thank you very much. We'll look forward to another update moving forward, just like for the student one.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, we have a consent resolution tonight with a couple of items on it. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. The board will consider approval of one, personnel, A, temporary appointments and salaries, and B, retirements. That was Selagi and.
Stephanie.
Carlin.
Aye.
Please call the roll.
Aye.
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 Herzog.
Aye.
Carrons.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you very much. Request for future agenda items. I would like to propose one that came out of the listening session tonight, and that is an update on the nutritional guidelines that are met in our breakfast and lunch programs for our students.
Good call.
Any other requests?
We have a lot of good ones coming up already scheduled.
Yes, we do. Looking forward to them. Any announcements tonight? Mr. Carrons?
Just a few events I, a couple of events I attended, just to say how great they were, the 180-degree awards at Oshkosh West. Second year I've been at that, really cool event. And this year had Ted Nitski talk and he's, he's just an incredible human being and it's a, a perfect spot for him to, to motivate. And he said it's one of the few schools in the state that even do something like that. So that's, and then attended the Adaptive Sports League event at West on Friday. That was awesome. It was pretty packed in there. The environment and the atmosphere was awesome. And then it's February, it's Black History Month. So for that, I just want to acknowledge that we are in a, you know, that, that month of the year, it's, it's very important. And so I urge all of us to take some time and reflect and learn during this month. So that's all.
Anyone else? Just have two quick announcements. I think we all received an email from one of the community's members inviting us to a Super Bowl tomorrow for lunch. That's between 11:30 and 12:45, I believe. Super spelled S-O-U-P-E-R. It's a soup eating contest, not how much you can eat, but rather it's, you sample different soups prepared by different staff members, and then you get to vote on your, your top, your top pick. So that's coming up tomorrow. And then I just want to give a shout out to Teresa Duran, our foundation director, who worked with the arena and the Wisconsin herd, was able to obtain roughly 600 tickets to last night's ballgame, which was a, a feature on Black History Month. And so we had about 600 or 800 of our students and their families attending the herd game last night, some for the first time, they'd been in the arena. And so it was a nice partnership and a nice opportunity for our students and their families. So kudos to Teresa and to the, the herd for making that opportunity possible for our people. Anyone else? Well then, how about a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Carlin. Second, Selagi. Please call the roll.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog. Aye.
Carrons.
Aye.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.
Yeah.
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 Yeah.